The wifi is very slow in here. All it will do will pull this up. I'm not going to attempt anything else.
Yeah, it's not like they pulled it up.
Thank you for bringing the sign by. It is in the yard.
Thank you.
So, I don't have no juice on my phone to deliver the hot spots.
So, nobody asked Keith for the criteria?
Yeah.
Because Monique has it. Yes, it's copy. I know.
You want to read them all this slide?
I have a copy of it. So, Monique, if you need it, I have it too. Mm-hmm. Yeah. I do. Oh, no, I don't. I was going to say I have a charger, but I just took it out of my purse because I was looking for the charger for the computer in case I didn't want the computer to die.
It's still 92 degrees.
Yeah, it's hot out there. It is so hot.
Usually it heats up by now.
I know. No.
It's actually like 100, whatever.
Yeah, you can feel it the second you step out there. My kids were in soccer tryouts last night and it was like midnight. It felt like it was 100 degrees and they're just sweating. Like, I mean, what a full hour and a half.
Do they really?
Our kids.
Well, my youngest son and I are going on ancestral trip through Canada.
Oh, nice.
Our, our, my side of the family were some of the original, I mean, they were like the Mayflower people from only to Canada. So, we're going to visit some cemeteries where they're buried.
Wow, that's cool.
And just take in some history.
Okay, well, now that we are all here, I am going to.
The gang's over here.
All right. Okay. Hello, it is 6:31. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Charter Township. Let me start over. Welcome to the Charter Township of Meridian Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 15, 2022. Looks like, shall we do just a present roll call? Is that helpful for, does it matter?
Sure.
Okay. I'm going to go down the line here and, well, and we have a new member, so. Member Koenig.
Present.
Member Field Foster.
Here.
Member DeShane.
Present.
Member Primo. Got it?
Present.
Okay. And Chair Mansour is present. With that, we'll go ahead and take a look at the agenda. I'm looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Member Field Foster.
Support.
Supported by Member DeShane. Any questions or concerns about the agenda? Okay, if not, we will go ahead into a vote to approve tonight's agenda. Member Koenig?
Yes.
Member Field Foster?
Yes.
Member DeShane?
Yes.
Member Primo?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the agenda is approved. Next item is Corrections Approval and Ratification of Minutes for Wednesday, May 18, 2022. Any corrections? Yes, Member DeShane.
I move support of minutes as presented.
Support.
Moved by Member DeShane, supported by Member Koenig. Any questions, concerns, comments? All right, this is a vote to approve the minutes from Wednesday, May 18, 2022. Member Koenig?
Yes.
Member Field Foster?
Yes.
Member DeShane?
Yes.
And Member Primo?
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't here.
Thank you so much, sir. And chair votes yes, so the minutes for Wednesday, May 18 are approved. Next on our agenda is Communications. We have an item from Donna Brenda Beam and I'm sure Mr. Chapman will cover that in.
Yeah, there was another one as well from.
Okay. That's right.
As well.
That we had an additional letter received in our packet, so noted from the agenda. And I'm sure we will cover that during Mr. Chapman's presentation. And next item on the agenda is Unfinished Business, of which there is none. So, that brings us to New Business, which is ZBA Case Number 22-06-15-16089, East Lake Drive, Roger Taylor, Hazet, Michigan, 48840. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chapman first, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. The applicant has requested a variance to allow an existing accessory building to project into the side yard and building separation setback located at 6089 East Lake Drive. Property is approximately 3.36 acres in size. Is zoned RB, single-family residential, high density in the Lake Lansing overlay district. So, the applicant had two separate sheds that were located in the side yard, which is on the north side of the property. I'll pull it up here. So, the sheds themselves are non-conforming because they do not meet the required five-foot side yard setback and the 10-foot building separation setback. The applicant constructed an addition that connected the two sheds without a building permit. This addition subsequently expanded the nonconformity, which is prohibited by the ordinance because the ordinance states that "non-conforming single-family structures may be altered, expanded, or modernized without prior approval of the zoning board of appeals provided that such structural alteration or extension shall not increase the extent of the nonconformity and shall satisfy all other applicable site development regulations." So, at the closest point, the accessory building is located 1.1 feet from the side property line. That's on the north side and is approximately two feet from the existing single-family home. So, the applicant is requesting a 3.9-foot variance for the side yard setback requirement of five feet and an eight-foot variance for the building separation setback requirement of 10 feet. And also, as a point of clarification, the two sheds were approximately eight by nine and 10 by 12. So, we don't require a building permit for sheds that are under 200 square feet in size. But when the addition was added, that bumped it up to approximately 210 square feet in total size, which does require a building permit from us.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Great, thank you so much for the clarification and the presentation. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative here tonight? And if you'd like to speak and come up to the podium, sir? Just need you to state your name and address for the public record, please.
Okay. Name is Roger Taylor, 6089 East Lake Drive. I'm the owner of these two sheds. They're back-to-back, okay? And I've been living there for 12 years and those sheds were there long before I moved in. The Earls gave me the information on these sheds. They said that they were in existence, one was in the 60s and the other was in the 80s. Now, the reason why I did what I did to make the connection is because on each side of my sheds, there's restricted areas. I'd like to show some pictures, if I may.
Okay.
And. Okay, this is the south side of the shed of the one in question. Okay. It's the south side of the shed and if you see that little corner there, that is my house, okay? And this has been here since I lived here. That little area there is very hard to maintain because of the distance between the house and the shed. Let me, can I show a picture of the shed that's? This shed here opens up to the east side of the property. If you could see the little piece of the gutter there, that is my garage. And on the side of that is the only opening that I have is on the north side, which there is a fence that's there. And I only have, each brick is about six inches, a little over those six inches to get whatever I need to get into that shed. So, every time I have to move a bike or a tube or anything, it's a very, very encumbered type of laborous situation. I either got to lift it over the fence. My granddaughter tripped over the fence one time and with her bike trying to get it out of there. So, it's just, the safety accessibility of this is in question, so. And then, this shed was old enough where the back of it was starting to get to an area of repair. So, my wife came up with a great idea. She said, if we had something that could connect the inside of it, then we have more room to get, to bypass the side of it. I said, well, that's a wonderful idea. So, I started that construction. And unbeknownst to me, the code inspector came over and said, stop. So, I did. So, then I went to Keith. I said, Keith, here's what I'm doing. And I don't remember verbatim what Keith told me. He said, it should be no problem. Keith told me this and then Brian, also the other planner, told me, should be no problem. Then, the code enforcer brought up this variance thing, this, what Keith had recited to you. So, in the midst. This is what I have to, to actually get around. This is the much, how much room I have on that side of the north side with that fence there. This was the shed that had the opening that we connected a breezeway that I guess I'm in violation of by making a connection. And that area there is about two foot, three inches. Now, this is actually a top view of what I'm doing. If you're looking from the top of my shed on the north side is the wall of the breezeway that I'm putting in. It's just two foot long. That's adding and that makes us go over the 200 square feet, so. And these sheds are non-insulated, you know? All I do is I have a tool room and I got lawn equipment in there and tubing stuff, stuff for my boat. That's all I do. This is also a top view of the north side. As you can see, I'm limited access. Like I said, to me, it's very hard to get anything. I can't even get a lawnmower in there. I have a hard time even weed whacking in there. So, mostly I have to use a chemical spray to get all the weeds out of there. I used to be able to run a lawnmower in there.
Mr. Taylor, I think we're going to want to see some more of these photos when we get into our board time and we're asking questions.
Okay.
So, I would wonder if there's anything else that you, that we haven't seen there that you have in your photos? If not, I'm going to ask you maybe to retain those until we get into our board time when we ask more specific questions about the building.
Okay.
Because I do see some other people here and I'm guessing there's some other people that have some commentary.
Anyhow, I just wanted to show you this last one.
Okay, thank you.
This is the finished product of the one side of the sheds that attacks the both, the breezeway. That's 2.3 inches there.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, and not only is safe, more safe for me and my grandkids and my wife, but aesthetically it looks nice too, so.
Okay. If you, yeah, if you, we'll go ahead and get other people's statements and then we'll probably ask you to come back up so we can talk to you and ask you some more questions.
All right, so.
Sound good? So, you can go ahead and have a seat. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this case this evening? If so, I'd like you to come up to the podium. You can give your name and address for the public record.
Is it still on, Keith?
Yep, that's ready to go.
Thank you. My name is Brenda Beam. My address is 6093 East Lake Drive. I am the neighbor of the Taylors. I'd like to show you this photo. The red buildings are his sheds. The blue is all house. That's how close they are as far as the legal setbacks go. I have another view. Thank you, Keith. Yeah, thank you. And one final. I have only two more pictures that I'd like to show. This is a view of the other side of the Taylors' home where they have a sidewalk and five feet that would give them a safe passage to their lakeside property. This photo is taken from what I call the middle shed. It's in between their garage and their shed facing the lake. When we installed our fence, my builder is here if there are specific questions, but this line here is actually the property line. We gave them extra space so that they could walk between the shed and our property. So, they only actually have just over 12 inches of property, which is right here. The second brick that he's laid is on our property. I wanted to read part of my letter, if that's okay?
Okay.
Not the whole thing, it's two pages long.
Thank you. Thank you for the brevity, but yes.
Of course.
Go ahead.
We respectfully request that the above referenced variance be denied. We understand your role is to maintain and enforce the integrity of the ordinances in the township we all enjoy. Mr. Taylor is a bully. As he not only calls 911 to report us, he calls to report others. Our opinion is that Mr. Taylor has not asked for the variance out of true need for storage, but is a continuation of the harassment that's been taking place since August of 2017. We wanted a six-foot security fence to block the junk that he piles between his sheds. As this situation has evolved, we wanted a six-foot security fence to keep Mr. Taylor off our property and to keep him from peeping in our windows and harassing us at every turn. He makes defamatory statements. He threatens our safety. Last week, Mr. Taylor was discussing a new meter with a consumer energy employee. Mr. Taylor began coughing. When asked by the consumer employee if he was okay, Mr. Taylor responded that he had COVID and he's trying to give it to him, pointing to my husband. This statement has been recorded. We were forced to install a security system to protect ourselves from baseless complaints. Some of our neighbors attempted to broker peace in June of 2021. Mr. Taylor's response was to tell them to stay out of it. Mr. Taylor's actions make the entire neighborhood uncomfortable. However, no one else has made a formal complaint for fear of being his next target. He has been encroaching on our property since before we purchased it. I included some other photos in my file where we had to ask him to remove his trash container from our property. He had installed a fence on our property. He is still trespassing on my property. We were gone in March. He climbed over our fence, for what purpose I don't know. On a second day, he threw a ladder over our fence to work on his sheds because he can't maintain them unless he trespasses. This is a picture of Mr. Taylor's property across Lake Drive where he has three other sheds, a total of five, and also has a one-car garage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Beam. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this case this evening? And if so, you can come up to the, Ms. Taylor, we're not going to go back and forth. I'm just going to make sure we get all the public comment that we can. If there's anybody that. I'm not, I'm not in the business of getting into an argument between neighbors. We are just going to talk about the case tonight. So, if there's anybody else that would like to speak on this case, you're welcome to come up to the podium and give your name and your address for the public record. If you'd like to speak, you can come up and give your name and address for the public record. We're not, if it's going to be back and forth to the neighbor, I'm going to stop you there.
Okay, that's fine. I'm Ginny Taylor, I'm Rogers White. I just would like to ask why she could do and say all those things. We have a mountain of lists that they have done. We chose not to do that here. We are here for the variance. We were not coming in here to tell you the things that they have done, okay? So, it is a problem that we don't get along as neighbors.
Right.
We've been trying to stay by ourselves. I'm not asking to go back and forth, but I really don't believe that she should have been allowed to say something like that.
Mrs. Taylor, respectfully, this is a public meeting. This is a public forum. Any, anyone is welcome to attend and anybody's welcome to speak. What we're doing here is we gave Mrs. Beam the chance to speak.
Yeah.
As anybody else could speak. Any, anyone in the audience could speak. What they speak to is not our, it's not, we can't, we can't say what people can talk about. That's freedom of speech.
Okay, so if I stand up here and tell you for the next half hour or so, all the things that they have done?
Respectfully, she had about four or five minutes tops, so if you'd like to.
Including that I had to call the police because indecent things were done in front of me.
Mrs. Taylor, let me ask you.
It's really bad.
Just a moment, let me just ask you a question.
Yes.
Because my, my business here as the chair of this board is to do board business.
Okay.
Which would be to talk about the variance.
Okay.
I respectfully, I have to give them a chance to speak. They are neighbors. This is a public meeting.
Right.
We want to get back to the case. So, if you want to go back and forth on neighbor stuff, we're wasting time talking about the case.
I understand you're saying that, but I don't think you're understanding what I'm saying. She was allowed to say all the negative things that we do. I'm not going to go into that with you because you said this is not the time and place. But the thing is, I feel that you should have told her the same thing, not to say the things that are so nasty. I'm sorry, that's how I feel because.
Thank you for sharing your concerns. Thank you for sharing your concerns. Okay. On that note, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this case tonight? Okay, if not, we are going to get into board business. So, board members, anything to add or any questions? First off, I just want to thank staff for the presentation and for the presentation answering the initial questions I had had, so I appreciate that, guys, very much. Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add? And Mr. Taylor and Mrs. Taylor are both here, so we can ask questions of them and he has, he has photographs if we need them, so. Member Field Foster? I'm reading your mind here, I know you've got something to say.
So, to Mr. Chapman, I just want to make sure that I am getting this right. So, there were two sheds that were on the property prior to the homeowner purchasing those sheds. An addition was built between those sheds to connect them, which ultimately made the need for a building permit, which was not requested. And at that point, that further extended the nonconformity of those, of those buildings. So, it's basically already done. Is that, I mean, that addition is basically already been built and so we're being asked to grant a variance for something that didn't get a building permit. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, what, my question is, what are our alternatives?
Yes, Mr. Primo, good question. And I think that we can ask that of staff, but I don't know that there is really an alternative. It's grant the variance or not, grant or deny.
That's correct, yeah.
And what is, maybe what is recourse if we deny or?
And if we deny, what would the consequence to the owner be?
So, if we deny, the addition would have to be either removed or the entire shed itself would have to be moved so that it is in compliance with the zoning ordinance. So, there's a couple options there.
That's a good question, thank you. Member Field Foster?
So, then a question to Mr. Taylor, if you'd like to come up to the.
Yep, you can bring your pictures, just so you don't have to go back. Just in case we have a, instead of making a walk back and forth with us.
Okay, can I just put a side note in here? The reason why this is still under construction, this breezeway, is because I was told by Keith and Brian that it should be no problem to connect these sheds. So, in immediate time, before I got the code violation, I was working on these things. It's not that I was trying to circumvent a permit. I was told that, hey, it should be okay. I was told by Keith and Brian. So, I want you to know that I was not trying to circumvent a permit. I was just trying to make it a safer walkway for my wife to get through, which she'd come up with a brilliant idea to make this breezeway and make it a little bit more safely compatible for us to carry our equipment through. Now, this, by having this breezeway, will not affect any of our neighbors. It looks aesthetically good. It increases the value of our property and it doesn't do anything else except for one thing, is this makes it a little bit bigger so I can crawl through. You know, I feel like, you know, I'm kind of tunneling in and a rat and I just made a bigger hole. So, I don't know how else to make an analogy of this, but I just want to be safe for my wife. She takes her bikes through there. I got a granddaughter that goes on the side. That's the only side of the house that we have access to. I don't, I can't go all the way around my other side of the house and then I got to still come up that side of the house to get to that, that one shed. That shed only opens to that one side of the north with, which has that fence, which has two six-inch bricks on each side. So, I'm just telling you, it's, it's a restrictive area that makes it unsafe for my family, which is what my main concern is, or anybody that goes through there. I mean, I've had my other neighbors, why is this here? I said, well, I don't want to go into this, but it's here. But you know, the thing is, I got to do what I got to do. This is the only way that I knew how to alleviate rubbing up against the fence. Now, they say that they own the other half of the property, but they don't bring in a survey to prove that, so.
So, Mr. Taylor, can I ask my question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right. So, you talk about safety of these buildings and the amount of space that there is. Have you considered tearing down that shed and moving it somewhere else? Because it does seem like you really, there's not a lot of room there and so have you considered putting it perhaps somewhere else?
Well, I tell you what, I'm just going to go like this. I'm not a rich man and the economics prevents me from doing that.
Come on back to the microphone just so they can hear you.
It's just that the economic of placing a shed out there, a new shed, and placing it 10 feet away, it's just not in my budget. It's not in my budget. But what I did was just react to something what I was told that I could do. And then, it's still under construction and that's why you see stuff in my yard because I can't put stuff in my shed yet because, you know, I don't know whether this is going to go through or not. So, all I'm saying is, this does not hurt this property value. It doesn't hurt my neighbors. It doesn't hurt anything else and that's all I could say. I mean, I think I have neighbors here that looked at the fences and their question was, why is it here? and their question was, "Why is it here?" I goes, "Well, I don't want to go into it." Well, you heard the reason why, mostly. But I'm not going to go into that tirade, so. But you know, like I said, here is -- is this on Keith?
Mr. Taylor, let me ask you a question.
Yep.
While we're on the subject of not being able to move it, is it possible, because we've done this on my own property, to move the shed instead of it being up against the house, move it further back into the yard so that it is more accessible?
I have a tree there.
Okay.
I have a tree and a garden and a berm. So, and then I also have a side door that I have to come out of, on my sunroom. I mean, like I said, it comes down to economics. You know, this is the simplest and most economical way that I knew how to circumvent being safely accessing this shed. Want to see anything else? You got any more questions?
Um, let's see. Member Field Foster, go ahead.
Do you have other sheds on your property?
I have sheds on my property across the street, yeah.
And so is there space there that you could move this shed?
Well, I'd have three sheds out there. I'd rather leave it where it's at, you know?
I have two questions, actually, for staff. Number one, is the statement that you said there shouldn't be a problem an accurate statement? And if it is, were you aware that it was going to exceed the square footage?
So I was not made aware of this building until after it was already built. We sent him a notice to stop work. He came in with the plans, and then that's when I wasn't made aware. The work had already been done. So I didn't say anything ahead of time that it was good, so that's not true.
But was the statement made by someone from staff that it shouldn't be a problem?
Not to my knowledge, no. It might have been, as long as you meet the ordinance requirements, then it shouldn't be a problem. But that would be all that was told them.
So it could have been an initial conversation with staff that was, you know, during the application process that you were told it shouldn't be a problem once the paperwork is in?
Well...
But perhaps the building permit was not completed and accepted?
And we didn't even have a survey until, you know, way after that.
I have a second question.
Yes, Mr. Primo.
Do we know, do we have any idea of what the requirements and ordinances were when... And I understand you didn't own the property at the time when the sheds were originally erected?
I couldn't tell you, no.
But I think the clarification that they made during the presentation is key, that those size of sheds wouldn't have required permits. So that wouldn't have been...
I understand that, but in terms of proximity to... We do have ordinances that regulate proximity to adjoining property. And I'm wondering, you know, originally, how that happened. Obviously, that's a history question. But if it was in compliance originally, he bought the property with the buildings there, that makes it a different issue than if they were never in compliance.
Yeah, I don't know the specifics of the history on it. It's likely our ordinance hasn't changed much because our ordinance hasn't changed much, so.
Well, one shed was built in the '60s, Deborah Earls. I got an email. She emailed me the history of these sheds. One was built in the '60s, and the other one's built in the '80s. Okay?
So what about -- yes, Member DeShane.
I'm guessing you've applied for building permits before this building permit for other homes you've owned in the township. Is that correct? Or is this the first time you've applied for a building permit?
I have never applied for a building permit. I never applied. I'm not trying to circumvent a building permit. But let me just tell you the chronological order of what happened here. And I've got to disagree with Keith. What had happened is, I started building on this. The code enforcer came out at their request. And then the code enforcer said, "Stop." And I said, "Okay." And then I took the time to come down and talk to Keith. I said, "Keith," now this is before I got anything in writing or anything to tell me that I was not in compliance with this 10-foot law.
But, Mr. Taylor, to be clear, the order of events is that you started building, then code enforcement came, then you went to Building Department?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Did you do the work yourself, or did you hire a contractor?
I had somebody helping me that was a good friend of mine.
Is he a licensed builder?
Uh, he's not yet, but he helps me out around the house, so he's an handyman.
If you spend any time on a lobby, there's a steady stream of people going upstairs to getting building permits all summer long, during the entire construction period. I'm just amazed that you didn't think you needed a construction permit. It's very common, any work you do on a home in Meridian Township, you get a building permit. Why did you think you were exempt, would be my question?
It's not that I'm thinking I'm above the law. It's just that I didn't try to circumvent this at any time. I just tried to say, "Well, I've got to open this up" because I had a rotted panel in the back of this thing, this one shed. Then my wife said, "Well, why don't we open up the back of the other one?" And then I said, "Well, good idea." Well, then the code enforcer came out and said, "Hey, you can't do this." I said, "Okay." So in my quest to try to get everything legal, I came down and asked Keith and Brian, say, "Hey, can I connect these sheds?" And he said, "Should be no problem." And that's exactly what he said.
At that point, did you complete the application process?
The application for the variance?
For the building permit?
No, no, because...
Okay, so then you were told that it would need...
No, they told me I needed a variance.
A variance, okay.
Now, this is coming up, this verbiage of a permit. I have no problem getting a permit, you know? I have no problem with getting in that.
But you did at the start of the project, and you talk about safety, but the whole reason we have ordinances and permits is to protect citizens from unsafe structures. That's why I'm surprised you didn't think for a minute to check with the Building Department before you started construction on this project. The point is to keep safe, keep you safe from unsafe structure and to keep your neighbor safe.
Understood, understood. As I was doing this, I didn't think repairing the back of the shed would require a permit.
But it sounded like you were doing more than repair. You were then connecting two sheds, correct?
Well, I was thinking about what my wife said. I said, "Well, maybe I could do this." Then I got stopped by the code enforcer. The code enforcer said, "You've got to stop." I said, "Okay." Then I come and talk to Keith and Brian. They said, "It should be no problem." Then I started doing one day's worth of work, and this is what I got done so far. I have, like I said, I'm not trying to circumvent a permit.
But you did circumvent the permit. You started constructions with no permit, no plans before our Building Department, and no survey of the property. All of those three things are what you would normally do in a permit process.
Well...
I don't doubt your intentions were good, but what you did was in violation of all of our ordinances. That's why your intentions don't matter if what you did was in opposition to what our ordinances require.
I understand that. I understand that. Now, I understand that there's no excuse for ignorance. But the thing is, I didn't think that replacing the back of the shed and creating an opening... Now, I didn't think that it needed a permit, okay? Now, that's my thinking. Now, I validated this by coming down to the Planning Department and asking Keith, and he said, "There should be no problem." And then also...
But Mr. Chapman doesn't recall that conversation, that he gave you the green light for it. So that's your side of the story.
We've got to agree to disagree then, because I tell you what...
You're assuming that he agrees with it. That's what you were saying. He said, "He just told us he didn't remember that conversation at all."
Well, then I have to agree to disagree then.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, you're making all these assumptions. What you're saying, that there's a common agreement about what happened. Between you and Keith, there's no common agreement about that conversation.
Well, we've got to agree to disagree. If he says, "I didn't do it," well, I said, "I did do it." And I'm telling you, I'm telling the truth. That's all I could say. I'm telling the truth.
Okay, I'm going to stop you there, Mr. Taylor. I'm going to let Mr. Chapman talk because this is the employee of Meridian Township that is stating for a public meeting that he's...
I'm not questioning Keith as a trigger.
His side of the story. Mr. Chapman, go ahead.
Okay, so Mr. Taylor came in with a handful of drawings that were, you know, not to scale, not accurate. I said that as long as they meet the ordinance of five feet, then we're good. And so he told me that, yes, the five feet away was, you know, the sheds were five feet away. So I was like, "Okay, then you should be good, as long as they're five feet away." Then after he left, I talked to our inspector and got a better idea of what was going on and discovered that it was only a couple of feet from the house.
Okay.
So we contacted him again, told him, you know, "You're still in violation."
Okay.
So that was the...
And I'm assuming that conversation happened fairly quickly?
Oh, right after, almost immediately.
Okay. So thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Member DeShane, did you have any more questions?
No more questions this time.
Thank you. Member Field Foster.
So, Mr. Chapman, I guess I have got just one question. Regardless of the building permit, at the end of the day, the structure was going to need a variance because of its location and the way that it was extended, correct?
Yeah.
In adding the square footage?
In adding the square footage.
Correct.
All right. So at the end of the day, the building permit, while we still would be here because of this addition. Okay. So with that, I think I don't have any more questions because I kind of can't get past number one.
Yep. So, yes, Member Primo.
Here's my issue, that if we grant variances after the fact, then what prevents anybody from doing the same thing? It opens Pandora's box, in my opinion. As someone who was a licensed contractor, by the way, who knows about building, who knows about getting things inspected, getting permits, all of that, to make an exception after the fact, I think, opens the door for then what prevents you from building whatever you want and saying, "It's already up." So it's a dicey situation. On the one hand, you know, saying to Mr. Taylor, "Tear it down," is a tough thing to say. I get that. On the other hand, to say, "We're going to turn our heads," that's a precedent that I'm not sure we want to set. So, and I know I'm new to the Board, but from a building standpoint, when I was doing this for a living, the rules were the rules. And we paid a price when we didn't follow them.
I think that's an important distinction, and I appreciate that perspective. Thank you, Member Primo.
Can I have your comment?
Let me see. Does anybody else on the Board have anything they want to add or questions for Mr. Taylor? Otherwise, I think I'm ready to get into the criteria because I think that's going to be where we kind of are going to see some... Where we lie in this issue. Okay. I'm going to go ahead with criteria number one, which is unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district, and these unique circumstances are not self-created. I will say, just right off the bat, that I can't get past these circumstances are not self-created. So if it was... I understand the sheds are pre-existing to the property before you owned it. I'm not denying that. But in building this breezeway addition structure and in the timeframe in which you did it, this is a completely self-created problem. Had you have come to us and said, "These sheds are existing on our property," and given us the chance to look and say, you know, "We understand." It's a different, we're looking at a different case. And I think that Member Primo really laid out what I was feeling, which was that I am not comfortable granting variances on work that's already been done without the proper steps being taken. So I'll say that. Does anybody else have any thoughts or can anybody can reach and clear criteria number one, that these are unique circumstances and not self-created? I would love to hear a case for that, but I don't know that I can make that. And if I can't meet number one, then I can't support a motion to approve.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Taylor, did you have something to add?
I want to make this right. How can I make this right?
Unfortunately, this is the criteria that we're given in order to look at these cases fairly and equally. And again, this, that's, I knew that I would look at this and have a problem with the first criteria based on the language that says these unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure, that are not applicable to other land or structures, and they're not self-created. And I can't, I think that they're not necessarily unique to this area. I don't think that they're... And I believe that they are self-created.
You mean by me just...
Correct, by you creating the breezeway without going through the proper building permits.
Well, that's what I'm asking. How can I make this right? I want to do something to make this right.
Yes, Member DeShane.
I think you should wait for the outcome of this meeting and then meet with staff, and staff will tell you how you can make this right. This is, there are ways to go in compliance. I think the first would be to return everything to the state it was before you started construction, but talk to staff about this. This is not this Board's role to tell you how to make it right. Our Board's role is to decide if we're going to grant you a variance.
Okay.
Correct. Thank you, Member DeShane. Does anyone else have anything to add on that? Okay. Criteria number two would be strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties that would prevent the owner from using the property for the permitted purpose. Again, I would have a hard time meeting this one. I believe that the sheds existing as they were, you've used them. They're, I really do appreciate and understand the safety aspects you talk about. But I do believe that there's not a practical difficulty that exists in denying this variance. Any additional commentary in that one? Okay. So I cannot meet...
I have one more question.
Yes, Member Primo.
I'm curious as to, was the staff aware that the building process was stopped because of a code violation?
Can I speak to the Director, please?
Sure, come on.
Literally the reason we have to sit.
Director Schmidt. Please step up to the podium. Please join us.
I will.
Hello.
You know...
All right, Keith. So generally, the course of action for this was, we received a call that work was being done without a permit. We, Zach Fenner, our code enforcement officer, went out, noted that work was being done without a permit. We did not red-tag it at this time because Zach is not a building inspector. He is a code enforcement inspector. So it was not red-tagged immediately. Mr. Taylor came in, I believe, the next morning. I don't remember exactly the timing, but that is when the conversation with Keith initially happened, and I believe Brian was there. Then we were given, they went out and looked at it. We realized what's going on, called Mr. Taylor, discussed the ZB variance. At that point, we did officially say, "Work is stopped. Can't continue" because we knew then we had a problem with respect to that. Mr. Taylor did bring in a good deal of information, submitted this very shortly after the variance request. It was an incomplete application. We made him aware of that. There was some miscommunication, which is why it was on this agenda, not last month's agenda. We did then, very shortly after... We did then, very shortly after last month's agenda, receive the, a complete application, which included a formal survey indicating, what Mr. Chapman has pointed out this evening, that we have an issue with both side yard setback and setback off of the main structure. And that brings us up to speed.
Thank you very much, Director Schmidt. Did that help? Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Then I have another little comment.
Sure, Mr. Taylor.
Is there any verbiage about sheds that have been established for years?
I would ask that of Mr. Chapman, but I don't believe that that's necessarily in the ordinance. Nothing, nothing about existing structures that...
I mean, is there a grandfather?
There is not that I'm aware of.
No.
No. And Mr. Chapman is saying no. So, there is not anything in the ordinance about structures, pre-existing structures.
Okay, I'm assuming that this variance is not going through. And I'm just, that assumption, so what, I wanna do what's right. If I have to rebuild this and put it the way it was, then re-establish a permit for these sheds?
So, I think, I would agree with you. It doesn't look like it's any, we can't meet the criteria, which is, which is, if we cannot meet all five criteria, we cannot grant the variance. We have to be able to meet the criteria. That said, if the variance is denied, then there is, he could resubmit a building permit under different circumstances, but it would have to be a different plan than existing. Is that correct, staff? So, this breezeway in and of itself would not, as presented to us tonight, would not be able to be permitted if we denied this variance.
Correct, it would still need a variance.
It would still need a variance. So, if we deny the variance, you wouldn't, other than appealing the variance, would not be able to reply with this particular structure as you have it here. So, there would have to be a significant change in the, in the plan, in the, in the square footage, in the design for it to be resubmitted. Is that correct?
And it'd have to be permitted, right.
And then it would have to be permitted, yeah. So, that would be, that would be the, the order of operations for you. Would be first, it would have to be significant enough of a difference, and then it would have to go to the building department and, before any work was started.
Okay. Can I, would it be out of line for me to make an appointment with Keith or...
During this proceedings, yes. So, let us get through our, let us get through our criteria and our motions. But I think that that would be, would be great to be able to get with them as soon as you can to reconnect and figure out what can be done differently. And they are, I know that you, you're not familiar enough with them that you know that they're a very helpful and very agreeable department of here. So, they, they're gonna, they're gonna help you as much as they can. Now, keep in mind that because where, where this is, and based on the survey that you have, you've got an issue with how close it is to the house and to the side yard setback. So, you've got two variances there, which, as we get, I'll go ahead and get into criteria number three, which is granting the variance is the minimum action necessary, which would carry out the spirit of the zoning ordinance, secure public safety, and provide substantial justice. Which I can tell you right now, this body here is gonna have a challenge with having two variances at such large amounts. So, when you're talking about a variance, you're talking about a 10-foot setback from the main structure, and you're asking for an eight-foot variance, meaning you're two feet away from your house, that is, in my opinion, not a minimum action. How can we get that to be as minimal as possible? When you're talking about a five-yard setback and you want four, four feet of a variance, meaning you wanna go one foot away from the side yard, that also is, is really pushing it to the limit of maximum action versus minimum action. So, keep, keep those things in mind. We understand in these areas how tight those lots are, and we're, what we're looking for is just a bare minimum of what we can adjust to those side yard setbacks and setbacks off the, off the main structure. So, that is what I will say to that. Does anybody have anything to add on the board here about minimum action or, I'm sorry for speaking for all of you, but I think I, I know you well enough. And Mr., Mr., or Member Primo, I'm sure that on the planning commission, you have similar feelings for that. Criteria number four, so I'm sorry, we're not able to meet criteria number three. Criteria number four, granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character of the vicinity of the property. And I, I kinda, I kinda go both ways on this one. I could, I could see it and I, and I understand Mr. Taylor's perspective of it being in line with the other sheds. And I can also see from, you know, from the neighboring perspective that it's also a very large kinda chunk there right at the back of the house that, that's right on their property line. So, that said, I...
But it doesn't matter?
Yes, I would struggle to meet it, anyway. And then criteria number five, granting the variance will be generally consistent with the public interest and the purposes and intent of this chapter. I wouldn't be able to meet that based on doing the work out of order and not with, going through the proper channels in the proper time. So, unfortunately, I could not meet review criteria. So, if anyone has any motion for me or any commentary or question, yes, Member DeShane.
I move for the denial of ZBA case number 220615-16089, Eastlake Drive, Roger Taylor, 6089 Eastlake Drive, Heslett, Michigan.
Support, Member Field Foster. Any questions or comments?
My question of clarification is, what, what is it that you're denying? The current building or the buildings as they, the buildings that were already established or...
The variance put forth by the applicant to variance from section 86-5653 and section 86-502.
Okay. And, and, and for the applicant's benefit and mine, what will be the consequence of the denial of the variance?
This is why it's great we've got two staff people here today. So, Keith or Tim, would you care to comment on that?
Yes, thank you. Director Schmidt.
So, the course of action when the ZBA denies variances is follows. You have done a very good job this evening of putting your reasoning for the denial on the record, which we appreciate greatly. We will issue a formal letter of denial tomorrow. That starts an appeals clock. In theory, they could appeal to the court of competent jurisdiction, which in this case would be a circuit court. There is no appeal to the township board or planning commissioner or anything like that. You know, in this case, and in any case with a variance like this, we would sit down with the applicant and discuss their, their options. It will not be an immediate, you need to tear that out. But we will likely formally now issue a building violation because work was done without a permit, and we have not done that as of yet. So, there are certain administrative steps that we will need to take now to move this along. But we will gladly sit down with Mr. Taylor and discuss any number of options from simply taking out the breezeway addition to moving the sheds to making an alternative request to the ZBA in the future.
Great. Thank you, Director Schmidt.
Applicant, did you understand what he just said?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Great. Come on up to the podium, please, Mrs. Taylor.
I don't usually do this building stuff and that. So, is what you're saying then that we either have to take off what we've done and put the sheds back the way they were? Because there's nowhere else in our yard we could put another shed. I'm sure you guys would not allow it.
That's what, that's what Director Schmidt was just saying. Basically, as of now, work, work needs to stop.
Right.
And then you two can meet with the building department and discuss options for how this can be reconfigured or how it can be either in, within the ordinance, so it would not need a variance request, or that it changes significantly enough that you could bring it back to, to us as another version of the project.
Because I was gonna say, if you go out just a little further with them sheds and wants to go into our yard, then you're blocking the view of the lake and everything else.
Okay.
Because they're right on the side.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, that's all I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Okay. On that note, if there's no further discussion on the motion at hand, we do have a motion on the table, and we will go ahead and vote. Any other discussion before we do that? Okay, Member Koenig. This is, to clarify, this is a motion to deny the variance application. Member Koenig.
Yes.
Member Field Foster.
Yes.
Member DeShane?
Yes.
Member Primo?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, unfortunately, your application has been denied. But we do have in place you getting with the building department, going back to the drawing board and figuring out how we can get this in compliance, okay? Mr. Taylor and Mrs. Taylor? Okay, great. All right, on that note, since that is the only case on our agenda this evening, we will get into, let's see, is there any other business? There is no other business tonight. So, we'll go to public remarks. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this case or any other ZBA business? And if so, you can come up to the podium, and we'll just need your name and address for the public record. Do you have another comment, Mr. Taylor?
I, for the life of me, I mean, all due respect...
Wait, just come on up to the podium, just so we can make sure that you're...
To the panel, on the board.
You let her speak the vitriol of my being a neighbor to her, but you did not allow my wife to even make a five-minute comment. You allowed everybody five minutes, but you didn't allow my wife. I don't understand that.
Sir, I, I wanted to move it along so we could talk about your case. I felt that it was in the best interest because we're talking, Mr. and Mrs. Taylor, we're talking about your home. Thank you for coming, but their, their comments had nothing to do with what you were doing.
But it's public record now.
I cannot control who can come to a public meeting.
This is public record.
If you'd like to come up for public comment and give your five-minute rebuttal, it doesn't have anything to do with the case. So, I wanted to keep you two on the...
She'd be smirking my, my neighborhood.
Sir, it had nothing, we didn't comment on it. We didn't address it.
You allowed her to do it, but you didn't allow my wife. I don't understand that.
Mrs. Taylor, if you'd like, you're welcome to come up for public comment. You can say what you need to say for as long, for the five minutes that was given to your neighbor.
I have a question. Will this be on the record?
This, anybody who comes up to speak at the, at the podium?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Mrs. Taylor, go ahead. You can have your, you can have your five minutes.
Well, the thing is, I don't like to, I'm gonna be honest with you. I haven't told hardly anybody what has happened, okay? Since the beginning of them coming in, we tried welcoming them. We got rebuttled in different ways. Now, I had to file a formal complaint against her husband for a very indecent thing that happened that he did to me. And ever since, we can't even walk out in our yard or anything or do anything at all. It's been continuous harassment. Even when the guy was out doing our survey last week, he comes out and he stands three feet from us. Every time we're in our yard, he comes out, watches everything we do. My grandkids are there, watches everything we do. He's done perverted things. And that, I have never told to anybody except for you now. And I cannot believe that there, she's allowed to stand up and say how rotten we are. My husband offered him vegetables from our garden right off the bat. He says, "I'm not..." He just blew us off and treats us like dirt. We can't even sit in our backyard anymore. We have to leave it because he's out there watching everything we do. Anytime we move, every time we go in the yard, everything. It's not a very good atmosphere. I'm sorry I have to say this, and it's on the record what he did. And he said, "There'll never be peace between us until I go and tell the police that I made a false report." And I'm not gonna do that because it happened.
I did wanna really go here.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. I, I can tell that this is upsetting, and I, I'm sorry that you felt denied. And I, I, thank you for giving your commentary. I, to be completely honest, Mrs. Taylor, I felt like it, it is emotional, and it didn't pertain to the case. So, that, I wanted you two to stay focused so that we could talk about your home. That's, that's why.
We can't even enjoy our home. We can't do anything.
Well, that's what I was upset about. You gave her time, but you didn't give my wife time. I know you gave her time in the end, but at, at my request. I mean, that, that's very upsetting to me.
I, I'm sorry that you feel that way about how I've run this meeting. My intention was to get to your case so that we could focus on the task at hand. Our, our task is not to mediate between neighbors. Our task is to talk to you and your wife about your home.
Right.
That is our task. So, that's why I didn't want you two going into back, a back-and-forth with other people. I wanted to focus on what we, what we came here to do, which was the business of this board.
I understand it.
I just don't understand why she was allowed to continue saying everything she wanted to say. That's the point.
Being, being a panel, it should be an egotarian-type panel where we all have a five minutes of comment. And she was denied that to me. I'm not upset with you. I just wanted...
I have given you that time. I have given your wife that time. You've had a lot of time at the podium this evening.
Okay.
That, that was my intention, was to give you the time to talk about your case as opposed to mediating a dispute between neighbors.
I understand that. But for the life of me, I don't know why it was led into the, why wasn't it stopped right away? I just, for the life of me, I didn't get that.
It's a public meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this case this evening? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment.
I just want...
Come on up to the podium. You're naming, naming address in the public record, please.
My name is Kimberly Thompson. I live at 6098 Skyline Drive. I just want, and I get that this isn't your deal, but I just want to let everybody know because this is gonna be on record, is that the Taylors, at every turn, when they had their survey done, the day before they moved in, the police were called. Everybody has their own perspective, but they're the ones who are harassing. They're the ones. We have it on videotape. And everything that they've done has been to make the environment ridiculously awful. I'm there every day. I've seen it every day. And I'm also part of this township on another board, so I understand not getting the emotions involved. However, this is, I appreciate your decision. This has all been completely on them. And I'm glad it's on record because now the wheels can start going in another direction. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else that would like to speak on this case this evening? On that note, I will close public remark and go into board member comments. And first and foremost, welcome to our newest member, right over from the planning commission. Welcome, welcome. Welcome, welcome, Member Primo.
I'm sitting here asking myself, "What was I thinking?"
Right. You got, you got in on a great, exciting board. We've been waiting for this position to be filled once Mr. Henderson left, so welcome. We really appreciate you being here. Yes, Member DeShane, go ahead.
Well, when Member Primo was appointed to the Planning Commission, 2016, he was done by Supervisor Steck, by Supervisor Steck, because of his many years in the commercial building industry.
Uh-huh.
So he had great credentials, and he's served the board admirably the past six years, and we look forward to your continued presence on there as long as you can-
Yes.
-continue to serve, and you're going to enhance this board by being on this board as well. So we're glad to have you here.
Yes, thank you so much, and welcome. And final commentary would be, just a note, once again, to just let everybody know what we do here at the ZBA. We do not mediate neighborhood disputes. So I just want to be very clear, on my decision to limit commentary was made because I could tell that it was going to become a back-and-forth conversation, and I was attempting to limit that, so that we could focus on the business of the board.
Well, the issue was the variance.
That is correct.
And that's where we needed to stay.
That is correct. I do, I, we have to walk the fine line, because it is a public meeting, people are allowed to submit, you know, communications with the, with the board. People are also allowed to speak publicly and make their comments on the record. That said, I didn't think that it was appropriate for Mrs. Taylor to rebuttal to the neighbor as part of these proceedings, which is why I made the decision I made. So, anybody that has a problem with it, can please submit a letter to Chairman Sore for the zoning board of appeals, but that is the decision I made, I stand by that decision. And Mrs. Taylor had her chance to speak at the end, and it had absolutely nothing to do with the case at hand, which is why I wanted to keep them on task, so that we could discuss the business of the board. So I said what I said. Member Field Foster.
So one, you don't have to defend yourself. You handled the meeting very well.
Thank you.
And at the end of the day, the letter is part of our board packet, which basically makes that public record, anyway. So it had nothing to do with the criteria that we had to go through, so I appreciate the way you handled the meeting, as usual. It was an excellent job. So just wanted to let you know, you do not have to defend yourself.
Well, just in case for all the, for all the folks watching every-
Well, and I think it, I think, to be clear, the comments that were made would not have affected the vote.
No.
No.
No, that is true. That is true. And I do, I do know that as part of our notification process, you know, neighbors are notified, and they have, you know, different bits of information to give and to offer regarding the cases and their opinions. Ultimately, unless it's a safety issue, I don't, I haven't had an opinion of a neighbor directly influence or affect our decision-making process. So we do encourage neighbors to communicate with one another and try to get along. It seems that this is probably a very difficult situation in that, in that regard. We just hope everybody's respectful and safe. So, yes, Member Koenig, go ahead.
I just want to say, welcome, Mr. Primo.
Thank you.
It's the first time in a long time that I did not say a word for the whole meeting, and it's-
Yes.
-absolutely fantastic, because every question and everything, every question-
You really did, you hung out there for quite a long time, Tim.
I know, I know. Every, I had, I had, I don't want to go back on this, this topic, but I did have a ton of questions and things, and there's actually a couple more questions that I'm going to ask staff outside of this meeting about this, because I was kind of going, hmm. But I thought you guys asked the same exact questions I would ask, and as the Chair, I thought you handled that situation, if I can mimic, Member Fields Foster, you handled that situation very well. Even if it was, I hate to say it, and I know there's no counsel here, but Mr. Schmick and Director could probably correct me if I'm wrong, but even if it was a safety-type thing, it's still, that's a civil issue, that we have a gentleman in the back, that his department handles those types of things. It's not an ordinance issue, even this obscene gesture or something like that. Unfortunately, it's a civil thing, it's nothing to do with the zoning code or an ordinance, and I thought the same thing the right away, that even a lot of that was irrelevant from the beginning. Even though people are free to make their opinions, and we understand it is emotional, and you said the correct term, it is emotional, and that's what you get sometimes. So I completely agree with the way you handled the situation and tried to stop that, because, and I, my opinion is that a party was more angry because they felt that, how do I, how do I say it? My sister used to do this to me all the time. She would punch me, and then she knew I was going to retaliate, so she would go and yell at my parents and say that I punched her. So that my parents would get mad at me, when I didn't even do anything, when she was the one. I kind of feel like that was a situation that was going to happen here, is that there was, toward the end, it was a little mad, because they kind of threw the first punch, and they felt they didn't really get the chance to defend themselves. And I completely understand that, you know, but however, it still would have been irrelevant.
By way of adding a little humor, when Mr. Henderson went onto the board and off this committee, and the opening came up, and I said, "I volunteered, I had been serving on the BRA committee," and I said, "But I will need to go off that committee to be on this committee." And the response was, "Are you nuts?"
Oh, come on, we're a fun bunch. We're a fun bunch. On that note, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you so much for joining us, and thank you, and welcome to Member Primo. We'll see you soon.
Thank you. Your first day was kind of like my first day.